Two final As?
Yes.
Okay. Only one. Do you like?
Yeah, they look the same.
They're not the same?
I think they are the same, actually. Let's run check in now.
All right, we're going to call to order the special meeting of Borough Council, the Borough of Morrisville for Wednesday, November 17th, 2021. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mike is speaking.
Mike, I hope you're on hold or be compensating with everyone else, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Virginia and Scott and Mike, are you all there?
Yes.
Thank you.
Virginia, could you do a roll call, please?
Yes. Dana Rebell? Mr. Bowers? Mr. Lajo?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Paul?
Present.
Mr. Robinson? Mrs. Sherlock?
Here.
Mr. Yeager?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Hearing of the public. Wish to speak? If you don't want to speak?
No.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on to four financing. Four A is a call for a motion to accept Duane Nicole's resignation from Borough Council.
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Suspicions? Motion passes. All right, we're going to move on to the budget review part of it.
Council President, may we just jump right to four E?
Okay. All right, we're going to move to four E, which is a call for a motion to execute the CDBG 2021 Herb Grant Agreement in the amount of $264,845.
Still moved.
Second discussion?
I do have a quick question, if I could. And Judith, please remind me, I know there was a change in the ability to utilize these grant funds for engineering fees. Is that accurate for CBDG?
It is.
All right. Do we have any concept of what the engineering will cost? Or has it already been done? Because this isn't the first time we're applying for this.
This isn't the first time, so we believe that everything is in the budget at this point.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Suspicions? Motion passes. Back to the budget.
So before you, you have A and B again. A is basically the same as what you had before. B is with the changes that were requested. So what I'd like to talk about is what we did was we had, Mr. Yeager had presented six options. What we did in this budget so far is we, number three, we reduced line item 01410731 by $15,000 instead of 20.
Are you able to? Sorry.
So if you go to, if you flip on B. Okay.
Can you also identify what it is?
Yes, I'm going to. It's if you go, I like to use the code number.
Which is fine.
But I will.
Technology.
Yes, that's the police technology. We reduced that, the request was to reduce it to $20,000. I left $5,000 in there instead because of the fact that we need laptops. The county is changing over to a new program, and we must have laptops. So I left $5,000 in there.
Will that be enough?
No.
Then where, go ahead, never mind.
I'm following through with what we were requested to do. 01410132.
I'm sorry, while we're talking about that, then what is the $5,000 going to cover and what won't cover?
It will probably cover maybe two laptops.
And I'll ask a quick question. Why wouldn't we take that out of the capital expense fund?
Because we removed the capital expense fund.
Based on the math that I did, there should have still been $113,000 left in it after the adjustment was made to cover the difference in revenues versus expenses. There wasn't any.
I'll show you where, you know, I'll go through what I have.
Problem.
If I may, thank you.
Can we just let her go through everything and then we save our questions?
And I'm okay with, you know, however you want to do it. I just want to show everybody what we did do. So if you go to 01410132, that's the extra part-time police. We reduced that by $30,000 that we were directed to do.
Should that be highlighted? Why isn't that? Is it 100 now?
It's 100 now.
Okay. It doesn't matter that it wasn't, okay. I thought that was just automatic.
Yeah. Line item 01438338. That was, that was the $59,000 that we transferred to the capital reserve fund. And it was directed for us to make that a zero and have no transfer into the general fund regarding that.
Out of the general fund?
Yes.
What number was that again? I apologize.
01438338. I'm using the paperwork from.
You're right.
I've got it.
Yep.
So just to help, just want to make sure everybody knows. So from that page, those are the three items we did so far. Okay. So I just wanted you to see that, what we did there. Then we have another email from Helen. The very first item, talking about the revenue with option B without EIT and option A with EIT. The difference, the reason for that is because the option with EIT, we have less tax millage. We kept it at 33.35. With option, without the EIT, we're increasing the tax millage, so you can't use that. So that, that's not an option. We couldn't use that $67,000, that was not an option. We did go to the real estate transfer tax, which would be. We don't have numbers on these, so. Thank you. So 310100. We did increase that to the $200,000 that we were directed to do.
I think that's 200. I'm just, I mean, I think that's too high, but just comment, we're not discussing.
So we did, we did that. The insurance reimbursement, 01380090. Insurance reimbursements. Helen did a synopsis there. We increased it to the 20,000 per her request.
So you want us to wait till afterwards for questions?
I'll defer to the Council President, however you want to.
Well, my question is, what were the reimbursements this year? Are these partially insurance reimbursements? Are these from accidents? Do you know what our track record for reimbursements this year was?
Looking into this, we just received a $24,000 check from Blue Cross. There's been some sort of legislation that made that occur. And so we were very surprised about that. We did get a $10,000 check from EMC, which was related for good practice in the past. Next year, I don't anticipate any of that because EMC, we have at least three infractions that I'm aware of right now. But I'm not sure if the 24K from Blue Cross will take care, you know, come through again or not. I know that she did a trend from several years. So it's an unknown.
Yes, that was my understanding, that's why I'm asking the question. So it, we are, the reimbursement, say someone hits our traffic light pole and we have to replace it and get reimbursed, that comes out of this as well, is that correct?
Yes.
So it is, it's accidents as well.
Yes.
And accidents are the unknown.
Yes.
And it could take two years to get it. So when you have a high number one year, it could have been because it was settled and that's how you got your, I just wanted to confirm that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Those are two items that we did follow through on. And then if you go down to expenses, option B, regarding the social security for the police department. Not all officers pay in a total of the social security Medicare. Only a portion are paying in. So we have a very skewed amount of money and amount of information regarding this. So you're going to see the 6.2%, but then there's also a 1.45 for Medicare. So it comes to 7.65. That's the real calculation. So we calculated at 7.65, that's what took us to the 98,000. So basically, I dropped it back down to the 6.2 because not all officers are paying in and some officers are. So if the officers pay, we pay. And that's how we have to do this. So I did take that down, but I only took it 79,000. So I'm not sure where this information came from, the 87.9. I think it's possibly from different, maybe different budgets, I'm not sure. I know this number was wrestled around with, I wrestled around with it because I was trying to get information from the office, from the police department, who's paying in, who's not paying in, who's exempting. So that number, yes, was moved around a lot in the budgets. So if anybody's questioning, why did I do that? Because I was really trying to get to the bottom of it. And when I'm trying to get to the bottom of something, I'll err on the higher end because if I don't know, I want to make sure that I'm covered. But if I do know, I'll take it down. So at this point, that number is at 79 something. I just wanted to explain that. And we didn't even go to the social security for administration, water, all of those items because that's not 6.2, it would be 7.65. 7.65, forgive me. So we didn't even look at those. Then the guesstimates for the, or actual increases for insurances, if you go to the next page. We were told to calculate anywhere from 10% to 15% as an increase for all insurances. So we did 15% on workers' comp and we did 13% on sanitation, life insurance, heart and lung, we did 15%. The others, we did 13%. We really felt that 15 was going to be the safer side with heart and lung and workers' comp, and 13 could be the middle of 10 and 15. So that's why we did what we did. But instead, we were asked to reduce that. We reduced them all to 10%. So I don't know where they're going to come in. I know we have a lot of workers' comp infractions, some concerned about some of these things, so I don't know. And we're, we don't, we're so far out in regards to prices, this doesn't happen until April or May, so there's no way for me to really know. I just know that everything's going up. So I am concerned about the 10%, but we did what, what was asked.
And workers' comp could be, who might be out next year? I mean, we paid really quite a bit and.
Well, and this really tends to sometimes go backwards. So really, we're really going to be paying next year on what's happened last year and the year before and the year before that. It's really not about so much what's coming, it's what came.
Has been.
Yes. So, and I'm dealing with several issues right now that I'm really trying to rectify for the borough. We did that, but can we, can we come back at the items we're not comfortable with? Because I really have some stuff to talk about to see.
Just noted, just noted for yourself.
Sure, I'm not comfortable either. I just want you to hear that. So we'll put a giant question mark on that. I know it says police budget in general. I did cut over $200,000 in our entire budget right from the start. So I can't really find a lot of these items that are here, but I will tell you what I did do, and I'm going to go line by line so each one of you has an idea. These cuts, again, I'm just going to say, I don't feel comfortable, but I did actually sit with the chief on many of them. So if you take police overtime for training, 01410130. We took that to 20,000 instead of 25. The extra part-time police, as I said before, we've cut 30,000 off the top, that's 100,000. Social Security, we adjusted, as I said. Enforcement equipment, we took that down to 10,000. Miscellaneous, we took that from 10,000 to 3,000. Police overtime, we took that to 25,000. I'm sorry, that's not overtime. Forgive me, I'm in the wrong, I'm sorry, it was gas and oil, not overtime. Gas and oil, we took from 26,000 to 25,000. Officers' uniforms, we took to 12,000, we minus 2,000 off of that. That's contractual, we have to keep it. I don't know that we can, you know, go any lower. Police officers' court time, 01410400. We took $15,000 off of that, we took it to 55,000. Police payroll health insurance, that was a big one. That one, we looked into this. There is one officer now at this time that is getting a complete reimbursement for insurance, and that amount is $15,000. So we are, that's how much that person gets. And that's what we reduced it to. So that was, that was a windfall.
We were only, if I may, I think we were only budgeting about 9,000 for the last five years because it was two people at the time. But we were paying more than 9,000 apparently.
Sure, well, the stipend we pay, that's different. The stipend is different than the reimbursement. The reimbursement is for anyone who has health insurance with someone else and they don't take our insurance and they're getting that reimbursement. So that's why I put 15,000 in there. The other item was the police, it's 01410722. I did another check on that. And that, we are at 232662 now instead. That was a windfall for us also because it was an adjustment because of persons in the plan. We did take the police technology, as I said, the 731, 410731 down to 5,000. I don't feel comfortable with that.
When is, excuse me, when is the laptops, when is the county turning over?
Right now, actually. So we're trying to figure something out. So that was, so we were asked to do that with the police budget, we did that. So at this point, by doing all of that, I do have one more item that we, a couple other items, I'm sorry. I know there was a notation about outside tree maintenance, 01409014. A portion of that was considered salaries. So I was able to take 8356 off of that. I don't feel comfortable because if any tree does fall on the borough property, we're not going to have any money to take care of those trees, seriously.
So you took it down to 8326, right?
No, I minus that, I minus that off of there.
Because it's still showing.
409014.
40914?
014.
014.
The fourth one down on page three.
Yes, it's, I'm sorry, it is down to 8326. 8236. I'm not feeling well tonight, bear with me.
So you want to leave that in there, then?
I'm just saying that we were at, we were at 16,592. I minus that.
Thank you.
I was trying to, you know, go through this budget one last time and pull any nitty-gritty item that we could possibly do because that's what was asked of us.
Stupid quote, what's the difference between outside tree maintenance and tree maintenance?
The tree maintenance itself is actually part of our salaries because we take, we take salaries from each area.
If our people are doing it, outside or?
Yes. Yes.
I'm thinking outside, well, they're all outside, aren't they?
Yes, 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 contracted services.
Judith does the inside ones.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, yes. Bear with me, if there'd be more time, I would have more notes for you.
So in this budget, we're going over, the two police officers are back in?
Correct, they are. The item that is not back in at this time is the public works person. At this point, everything that we cut, if you look on your front page, we still have, and this is at a 35 mil rate, and you can see there's our new assessment, the 61411.19. It's 59,26180 a mil. Excuse me. We have a $42,557 surplus. But what I want to tell you is, we did take the one-year hold, the number five that was suggested by Mr. Yeager, from the general fund, which if you look now under Streets, it's blank. That had the 59,000 in it before. It no longer has it. So we also took, we took the money that we would put in the capital reserve fund to pay the bills in January. So I just want everybody to understand, we did that, too.
While you're talking about that, can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
So the 264,0715 that's identified as being in the capital reserve fund from prior years, could you explain how we can reorganize some of that? Because I don't want to zero it out, but like I said.
And that's what I wanted to elaborate on next, thank you. So the TAN fund, currently there's $462,561 in it. In the capital reserve fund, there's 264718. This all is used in January, sometimes December, it depends. Last year, the office had to ask the MMA for our portion of money that they provide us earlier, and they were so kind to help us, and they did do that so we could continue to pay the bills. I'm not sure if they'll do that again this year. Yes, which will, till after April, which will probably do. Now, you're missing a public works person in this budget. We only were able to add the two officers. We did not add the extra public works person yet because we're left with 42,000, and we did everything you asked us, plus more. The only thing we didn't do is the, this reserve fund, and that's what I wanted to touch upon next. What happens is, and I wanted to touch upon this especially because I'm bothered by this portion. You had provided the ability to put one mil of tax funds into bear with me, please. Into the TAN fund. Does everybody remember that? There was one extra mil that was supposed to go into the TAN fund?
Because the 400,000 was not enough.
Okay. So when I looked at the budget, that one mil came out of this budget, but it's not here. So that, in all essence, put us one mil behind our budget. So I'm hoping I'm explaining this correctly to you, because maybe if you ask me questions, I'm able to.
I'll ask you to elaborate on that because, so you're saying that, so there must have been some point of though where council said, go ahead and put one mil into the capital reserve, that one mil was taken out of the general fund but not put into capital reserve?
No, no. So, I'm sorry. So one mil was there, that 59?
Okay.
Was there, if you have an older budget.
On the Streets?
Yep. That one mil was there to go to the capital reserve fund. Okay? So, and you asked me to zero that out. Now, capital reserve.
That wasn't capital reserve, that was money that was supposed to be going to, I'm sorry, it was capital reserve, you're right. So that money was supposed to go to capital reserve, not the TAN fund.
Right.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
And so that money did go to the capital reserve, it took us to 264. But then there was another mil that was supposed to go to the TAN fund. I remember it being done when I was being interviewed. So I looked back.
Okay.
Because I was concerned about this, because I've been trying to, you know, grasp this, like, where did it come from? Because I was thinking that as you were voting, you were saying, yes, yes, take an extra mil and put it in the TAN fund, we need that, because you do need it. You know, there's no doubt about it. Doing it was a positive thing, needing it was a must, but where it actually came from in here, and that's something I'd like to try to do better next year with all of us. When we vote to spend money, When we vote to spend money, I would like us to know where it's coming from. Not just me, but all of you. So it helps you.
Participate a lot of spending on your mix.
No, neither do I, neither do I. But it provides you with an educated idea, though, of, okay, you know, we're taking this line item, we're taking this money from line item, blah, blah, blah. And, and we should know that. So if you look at this, where does, where, where do you see in this budget of this year, where did that one mil that went into the TAN fund? Where did it come from? What line item did it come from?
Probably sixteen different line items.
Wouldn't Micah know that?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, no. But, but it came from the general fund. So now, what does that do to your general fund? You don't have enough money to operate to begin with in the general fund. You're now taking a mil of it, and you're putting it into the TAN fund, which is desperately needed because you, and really, the idea was a good idea because the scariness is, in January, you don't have money to pay your employees or your bills. So what I'm trying to get at is, that one mil that we did that with, you didn't really have it to do it with, and you definitely don't have it next year to do it with. So not only are you going to be losing this capital reserve, you're taking another sixty thousand and losing that, because we don't have it, it's not there. So as I work on this more and more, more things are becoming evident to me. And I said to everyone when I got hired, this was going to be a process for me because I've been digging and digging. I have spent hours and hours and hours digging into all this as to, you know, what we're, what is a good idea, what is not, et cetera. But does anybody have any questions? Am I explaining that?
I do. So I'm going to go back to the capital reserve from prior years. We've built up two-hundred-sixty-four thousand seven fifteen that we're using as a TAN fund, right?
But we're, so what we're doing is we're...
For cash flow purposes, we're using as a...
We're using the TAN fund that you see, and we're using the capital reserve. That's what we use to pay the bills from January till April.
Okay. All right, so if that two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand was just part of the budget, without being put aside like it is, help me understand how that doesn't resolve the problem because, and I'm just going to make it in very simple terms. If I have a bridge loan every year of twenty thousand dollars, and every year in January, I take out a bridge loan, and in April, I pay it back. And one year, I decide, you know what, I'm going to take out this bridge loan because I needed it to get through to April, and I just don't pay it back. I'm not understanding why that money still isn't available to be used elsewhere. Because that's kind of, I understand there's a cash flow issue, right? I get what Mike is saying, I'm not disagreeing with that. But doesn't that kind of cancel it out? If it's budgeted properly, the cash flow problem isn't a problem if it's budgeted properly, right?
Well, and a portion of me agrees with you and the other portion doesn't because if we take from that two sixty-four, that's the only thing I didn't do. If, and it's not the only thing I didn't do, because we're not going to put another, we're not putting a mil. We're not doing, we're not going to, we're not going to be putting a mil into, from the capital, I mean, from the general fund to the capital reserve, we're not doing that. We're also not putting a mil from the general fund to the TAN loan. So we're putting no money into next year, zero. So at this point, we have the four sixty-two and the two sixty-four. We need that money to pay for our bills from January through April. And I want us to stop this. Micah, are you there?
Can I hear you? Do I have a call on me?
No problem. Mike, can you tell me approximately each month, between payroll from January, February, March, April, between the four sixty-two and the two sixty-four, how much do we spend every quarter? Are you able to, I know that's off the top of my head, and I wanted to ask that before, and I didn't. I know I did ask it before, and I can't remember it, I apologize. Are you able to, and I'm not asking you to do that right away, I'm going to keep talking. So what I'm looking at is, because I know in December, we're, we don't really have the money. So December, January, February, March, April, how much money do we need to get through till the taxes? And if you could take a minute and calculate that, please? And I'm going to keep talking a little bit, and I'll get back to you, thank you. So basically, the TAN and the capital reserve, and that's exactly what I'm saying. So from December to April, that's the money, four sixty-two and two sixty-four, that we need to pay our employees, pay the insurances, and pay our bills, even withholding back sanitation, invoice, and so forth. So if we take, if we take money out of that capital reserve as to what you're asking, I'm concerned.
Well, I think he's asking to use it but not pay, right?
Yes, not pay back, not, not...
Now, my question is, what happens in twenty twenty, the twenty-three budget?
Right. Well, this is what I'm trying to say, so if we, but that's what I don't think anybody's understanding, and maybe I'm wrong.
I do understand, can I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I do understand. And to answer your question, Ted, the cash flow problem still exists, right? But we're voting on a budget, we're not voting on cash flow. That's where we're getting confused here, right? They're two totally separate things. The cash flow is the cash flow. We might have a cash flow issue that needs to be resolved, which it sounds like we absolutely do. But you cannot create a budget to resolve a cash flow issue because what you're doing, and I understand that you want to make sure that that money's available, but to raise taxes to correct a cash flow problem is not proper budgeting. That's not the budget, that's the cash flow, right? So if you put in an extra two-hundred thousand dollars in taxes just to resolve a cash flow issue, you're overtaxing the residents. Because you don't need that money to run the borough, you need that money to manage your cash flow, too. So, and by the way, I understand you need that money to run the borough as well, I get that. I'm not, you're absolutely right.
So I have to agree to disagree.
But, but the reality is, we need an option that doesn't put us in a position where we're creating a budget around a cash flow issue because that's, they're totally, it's two totally separate issues.
They're not, I don't think they're separate enough, Mike.
They are, though.
Well, and...
You know, if you take our budget and divide it by twelve months, you're talking almost five-hundred thousand dollars a month. I mean, fifty thousand dollars a month you were, you were asking about. I mean, so, you know, in four months, you need two-hundred thousand dollars. But you're saying it's not a cash flow issue, but if you don't have it to pay, and we already started at a deficit, then it is, it's a cash flow payment issue. I mean, but I understand how you're trying to separate it.
Well, if I may...
But if you don't have the money, you don't have the money.
Right, I mean, if I may interject, I mean, basically municipalities, with their budget, they make sure that they are covered for that. You can call it whatever you want to call it, but it's purely budgeting for December, January, February, March, April. It is, it is budgeting. We could call it a cash flow problem, we could call it anything we want to call it. It's what's needed to run the borough, so really, it's a budgetary item. All municipalities do this. They put money aside in a fund that will carry them until the new tax money comes. There's no way that anybody can. And if they don't have the money, they're going for these TAN loans, which we already have a hundred thousand dollar loan that we're paying on for all the municipal building renovations that took place. Windows.
I don't know how long ago that was.
I don't think that...
It's almost over.
Yeah, that had to do with the JCI stuff.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
But it is a payment.
But I'm just saying, we already have, so that's an issue for us, too. It's a borrowing issue.
But what is it, so Jane Berger had talked about that, where we, and I read about it, where municipalities go and they get these TAN loans, they pay them back at the end of the year. Did anyone look into that to see what the interest rate would be?
Yes, the interest rate was always high, it's creeping up again. And we also, though, because we already have a loan, I was told that it was not a good option for the borough to try to do that again. So it costs money to do that, so here we are cutting all of this.
But what is the cost?
I didn't look into that yet because we weren't going on that, you know, we weren't going there yet. We were trying to just get us to where we're at right now today and on how we're going to get us through next year. So, and there was never any talk about, like I said, going any further than what we have with the TAN fund and the reserve fund.
And the last, last time they tried to get the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar to hold over, as Mike had said at one of the meetings, we were, we were denied.
You were.
And so if you owe, if you have debt, and they see that you're, you have no money, you just don't get the loan. So I don't know, and if you do get one, it's a very high interest rate, so...
And that's what I was told, I was told you were previously denied. I didn't really want to say that in public, but that you were...
May I interject for a second? When you, when you say, "I was told you," who is the person, who is, who told you? Are you at liberty to discuss that or not?
Um, I had just heard it, actually, I know there was discussion at one of the meetings that we had.
Mike had mentioned it.
I think Micah did, too.
I mean, yeah, Micah.
I, maybe, I, maybe I'm a little bit naive, I don't know, I've only been up there for less than two years. But I know there's been multiple times over the last twenty months, whatnot, that I, as long as Helen, have been asking for a monthly cash flow analysis. I've never seen one. I'm told, well, you can find it here in your delivery, you can find it there. Now, we're going on ten minutes right now, wondering what the calculations are, how much money we're going to need in December. If we had a cash flow analysis in front of us, we would already have the answer to that question.
I believe you do get one, Scott.
It's called a financial.
Every month, you get a financial, it's in there.
Right, and if I can make a comment?
No, it's, it's in there.
And this month, I'm sorry.
So, Mike, how much money we're going to need in December and in January and whatever? So what?
Well, I asked Mike to just hold, I asked him to please hold. I asked him to do an analysis quickly and hold because I wanted to continue to talk.
The October financial states our general fund is a minus three-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand eighty-seven dollars. That should be your first red flag. And that's, we have two months to go. But we also got a report from our tax collector, which we're owed a hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars. We don't know that we're going to get all of that before the end of the year either. Although forty-two thousand of it is your garbage bill. And say we get half, it still puts us down a hundred thousand.
If I may interject, I'm glad you brought that up, Nancy. From here on out, you will get monthly your tax collector report, as you should have been all along, so you can see what's going on. That is something that should be taking place, and you're now, you just received that, and you will be moving forward every month.
Good, that's good. So it's to those who are struggling to pay their taxes now, or haven't paid them yet, or forgot to pay them. And if maybe you're listening, I don't know, please go out and pay your tax. Because it, now that we've connected it to the trash bill, sanitation, that was a good move because we've gotten much more money over the years. But it also depletes our, our way of paying the sanitation bill. So, I mean, it's all connected, all the money's together.
And we've been very fortunate with Portnoy. Portnoy has been collecting delinquent sanitation, and they've been doing a phenomenal job. So I have to say that, we've been very fortunate with that. But getting back to what I was saying, at this point, we're putting it, in this budget, we're putting a hold on one mil, which is fifty-nine thousand, from the general fund to the capital reserve. So we will not be adding to any of those monies that you see on the right-hand side down here, TAN fund and capital reserve. We're also, we also do not have in the budget the fifteen, another sixty thousand, I rounded off, sixty thousand to go into the TAN fund, which is what is needed. But we're not doing that either. So I just want to make it clear that we're not doing these things. So Micah, did you come up with an analysis of this?
Yeah, just to, just to do the quick math, if we add the TAN fund and the capital reserve, then you add what the MMA gave us, they gave us hands of the payment in advance. So that was another eighty-two thousand five hundred. And then we also held the republic bill, which is about eighty-eight thousand. So that gets you in the ballpark for about nine hundred thousand. The exact, I have it at eight ninety-seven seven seven six. So about nine, nine hundred thousand dollars.
Nine hundred thousand is, is what we need?
Yes, and again, what I did is, I took the capital reserve, the TAN fund, what the MMA gave us in advance, as well as holding the republic bill.
Was that the question that you asked him, though? I thought we were trying to find out what the operations were for months.
That's just the cash on hand will have.
Right, so, so basically, what I'm saying is, from December to April, how much do we need? And you're saying about nine hundred thousand dollars, that's what I thought you... Thank you.
And again, just simple math, what we borrowed from the MMA early, and we held the republic bill.
So our four sixty-two, our two sixty-four, our eighty-two five, that's what we used.
And the eighty-eight thousand, that's about our republic bill a month.
So if we take, and that's really where I was going with this. Because, Mike, I know you want us to take from the two sixty-four. So if we take from the two sixty-four, we'll be, we will...
My point would be, if, it's kind of ridiculous to have a capital reserve fund with two-hundred-and-sixty thousand in it. If it's not for capital reserve, it should be moved into the TAN fund, then.
Should be moved.
But that's, but that's not going to resolve your, okay, let me, let me, let me back up. So if you did that, that would get you to about seven-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, right? Rough, you know, rough math. And you have the forty-two thousand five fifty-seven, that's your overage in the budget. That can be moved to capital reserve to have something there for capital reserve in case you need to purchase the computers or what you need.
Well, we didn't put a public works person in.
Understood.
So we're minus, we're minus one person.
Which means we have three, correct?
No, nope, we have Mr. Later. Can you help me with this again? I'm sorry. Mr. Later, you have, you currently have?
Four.
Four.
And five, including myself.
Physical, physically five people? Correct, that's what I'm, that's why I said three.
Three plus himself.
I won't out on workers' comp.
And we're hoping that, we're hoping that will be resolved shortly, that I will be able to hire someone for...
Right, we lost an employee.
That retired.
Retired.
So the retired employee.
Is not being...
Is not being replaced.
Right.
And I just wanted to, so, so my whole thought process was, we show, we cut everything extremely, we down to having this forty-two. I wanted to show you that if I were to bring that public works person back, I need ninety-four oh twenty-two. That's just salary and medical health, dental insurance. I didn't do social security and do any of those things. So it was at ninety-four thousand. So if I subtracted the forty-two five five seven, I still need fifty, fifty-two. Really, the reason I did this was to provide you with the options for you to say what you want to do because we can put some of this money back. Mr. Later just did get a cost estimate for the roof. It was just a preliminary, came to a hundred and one thousand dollars. So we don't have that in the budget. So there's a lot of things we don't have in the budget at this point. But again, it's, it's a decision from council. I, I guess I wanted to show you that I don't feel comfortable. I've done everything you've asked. I just do not feel comfortable transferring forty-two thousand from the capital reserve back to the general fund. Because if we do that, I don't know how I'm going to pay the bills.
You're only talking about paying the bills for three months, after, or four months.
It's actually, it's actually, it starts in December, the end of December, January, December, January, February, March, April, it's five months.
It starts in April, but it's still not...
Yeah, some things come in, but it's not enough.
Can I, may I make one more comment? I remember last year when Mr. Mitchell was here, and he made a statement, and, and some of the council had totally disagreed, but he said, "When you're doing a budget, you're doing a budget for a year and a half, and that's what you have to plan on." Even though it's only says twelve months, and you're, but when you're really doing a budget, you're doing it for, it's true, yeah.
Move it to the TAN fund.
Ted, yeah.
You're right, Ted.
So if, if we're using the two sixty-two and change from the capital reserve, can we legally just move it to the TAN fund, which is what we're using it for? So we don't make this?
Yes.
This constant assumption that we have?
In fact, it'll be a suggestion. So I'm so happy that you're, you're...
That's a suggestion that I think we should do for, for the final budget because it's...
Absolutely.
It, it just makes it look like... it's, it just makes it look like we have 200,000 hanging there to do other things, and we, in reality, we don't.
Well, and I will say this, though. If something were to happen in the middle of, you know, okay, and, and this is why I, I'm oscillating as to how comfortable I feel doing that next year, because I'm down to less than the bare bones. If something happens next year, I would want to be able to pull from the capital reserve fund. I, I have no other choice. I'm, I'm left with no other choice. So, so I have.
All right, so then we.
So for now.
200,000 of it. You do, you do an amount that leaves something on the bone, that if there's an emergency, you can, you can access.
You know, so what if the roof does, you know, something happens? Now, you know, I'm sitting here going, oh, you know, so.
So we're not getting the roof repaired at this point? Is that what you're, I mean, there's no money in here, I see that, but there's a little bit of money.
Right.
For building repairs.
We are not, it depends.
So it's not, we're not planning on fixing the roof until.
It depends. It depends on how council, because that's, that's what I wanted to bring up next. I mean, I think right now, I'd like to just, you know, keep the TAN fund and the capital reserve fund the way it is, because I'd like to rearrange things next year. I'd like to be provided the opportunity. Yes, it is, it is. There's a lot of things that I want to rework, but next year is a better year. There'll be more time, but we still have that 42. Are we going to try to figure out how to get another public works employee? Or what, what does council want to see? Because.
Well, is that, is that something that we can wait? I mean, we have the surplus and let's say it's April, and everybody, this is, you know, best case scenario, everybody pays their bills, and then we still feel like going forward, like we're gonna still have that 42, then we can decide. Or if the roof breaks, we can use that 42 to fix the roof. Like, is that something that needs to be decided now, or can it be as we go along in 2023?
Put it in a miscellaneous fund.
Yeah.
Well, I, I was going to, what I was just gonna say, I was gonna put it in a contingency fund, yeah. It, you know, again, depended on what council would like to see, but I was not going to do the transfer.
Did John, John give you an analysis as to how many people he needs to be able to plow at least one time in a 48-hour period?
John, do you feel comfortable coming out to talk about that? Yes, you, you did. I know you provided me with a color-coded map. And at this point, right now, we don't have enough people.
Right.
Would you, so if, if the person that's on workers' comp would be coming back?
I'm still short on one person. Literally, I mean, I'll tell you, we have one section that isn't, there's nobody to do it, so somebody's gonna have to cover that. So whether it's me, somebody else, we all will, but then I have nobody to clear Borough Hall, clear municipal parking lot, the library. This hill out here, we use the backhoe to do Melton Court, we use the backhoe to clear and fire, firehouse, and do our sidewalks, though I don't have anybody to do it. So it could be three or four days before I get to anything. If we have a significant storm, yeah, we'll do it, but I'm just letting you know, we are short. I'm not just saying, I mean, these guys worked last year, the same amount of guys, one more guy, plus, yeah, yeah, one more guy we did last year than we would have this year, and my guys were sleeping on the table at the shop, getting their rest. We didn't have a bad, we didn't have a bad winter, so.
You, you guys always do a great job clearing the snow. Like, I, I, like, yeah, you guys really do, but like other towns around us don't.
No, they don't.
So like, if it takes an extra day or two, you know, that's just something I think we need to put out there so that people understand, like, it's a tough budget and.
Yeah, I mean, you can say that, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I'm not getting.
I'm more concerned about, I'll be honest, I'm more concerned about sidewalks and things of that nature, because they won't get cleared, and the problem is, they won't get cleared, and I get to them three or four days later, the road's solid. And guess what?
Slip and fall.
You're not, you're slipping falls, and you're not gonna get them cleared with the equipment that we have. That's why I was actually looking for a piece of equipment to at least be able to do sidewalks, and where I can send somebody out that's got a plow on them, we could push that at least off. I don't know how I'm gonna do it. I mean, we'll do it, I mean, we'll, my guys will do whatever needs to be done, but I'm just letting you know.
It's a time constraint.
Let's keep our fingers crossed.
So let me, let me ask you a question. If we have a significant snowfall, how, how long do you think it would be before every street saw a plow? That normally does, we're not, you know.
What's significant?
Last year, um, it's hard, um, get every street cleared.
24, 40.
They'd be 48 to 72 hours. That's, I'm guessing, it just depends on the snow, every, there's so many factors. It would be definitely a lot longer than what we, we do now.
And not to interrupt you, but I'm only allowed to have everybody work certain amount of hours, so I just want to make sure that's clear.
My CDL drivers are only, are allowed to drive 12 hours.
Eight hours between?
Eight, well, yeah, it's, my guys will drive, my guys have driven 16, 20 hours. We watch them, we watch them carefully, but, but they can't do it. You're allowed, they're, you know, but really, they're not.
Well, you're not.
If you run them, if you run them ragged, they're gonna, they're gonna want to go home, they're gonna want to sleep. As I said, we slept last year, we did, we slept, three of us, four of us actually slept last year in the shop on the tables, just because we didn't want to go home. Guys were like, I don't want to go home, I want to stay, you know, but I need a rest.
But once you go home, you have to get motivated again to come back out.
Yeah, you go home, you're tired.
So, so have we looked in, so if we, have we ever looked into, like, having, like, a lawn service do some sidewalks?
No, I, I haven't, I haven't looked into it. I mean, I, I, again, I know other townships have contracted out, doesn't, never ends well.
I know, but if we had like a big snow, just as a contingency plan, like, how much would that cost us?
I don't even know.
Goes by the foot and side.
But someone's gotta supervise them. That's the other thing, they can't supervise themselves, so someone's gotta supervise them. So who's supervising them? Is it me? And then I'm not plowing, then I've gotta watch them. I can only plow a little bit where they're at. There's, there's problems like that, those are.
I, I get it, but.
No, I understand that, but I, you know, it comes down to what you guys want to do.
Can I, can I make a comment for the public that may not, not know or is new to the town? There are certain streets you have to do that we're, we've already got our contract with the state, because we have state highways, and they get done first. And just for those who might be in the back roads, know that they're the priority.
And we'll get it done. We'll get the snow removed.
We are, we're reimbursed, we just found, yeah.
We do main roads, we do.
Right.
We do, because that goes into.
Crosswalk, yeah.
Schools and whatever, and then we do Jefferson. Those are the ones we try to keep clear as best we can, and then the rest stuff can kind of peel off. But two trucks have to do the, the main roads, it takes them an hour and a half to do the main roads. So that means, there's only this year, you're gonna have two of us plowing streets. That's it. Two of us plowing street while the other two guys are doing streets, but they're doing the main roads. And they have to do the main roads, you have to keep the main roads open for emergency vehicles and stuff like that, so.
And John has it separated out, and that's what, I'm very happy to see that, that each person has an area that they do, and then everybody comes together in the end, and that's a positive way of doing business when it comes to plowing and shoveling and so forth, so.
So we'll just keep our fingers crossed that we don't get any snow. I'm, you know, I'm joking, but I really, I'm not joking, I'm, I'm afraid. I'm afraid that we get a snowstorm, not for the residents, they all have to go to work, so, you know, and they count on us to get the roads clear. And again, we do, my guys take pride in when you said that these roads in this town, when you leave this, when my guys leave this town, or I leave this town, we hit, we hit falls, we hit Mayfield, and it's covered. So we'll keep doing the best we can do, but I think we have to really think about where we're going with this.
If I could interject real quick, John, the, the drivers or the workers that have the commercial driver's licenses, I'm familiar with the rules, because I run up against my hour limit every week. With the CDL, now, you probably don't have the electronic log monitoring in the, in the vehicle, so that's one thing, but the CDL, personally, the CDL's allowed to drive for 11 hours a day. They're allowed, you're allowed to be on duty 14 hours a day, which includes a field period, and at the end of 14 hours, you have to have 10 hours off. Now, I know that those hours, there's not a municipality in the world that files snow that probably adheres to those hours, but that's, they're the official rules, 11 hours maximum driving. Now, could they drive for 11 hours and shovel? Snow for three hours, they could. I know that would probably, I, we'd probably be last one day doing that, but 30, 30 hours, 11 driving, 14 on duty, 10 hours off, and no more than 70 driving a week. And then if 70 a week, give them a 34-hour reset period before they can drive again. That's what, you know, the rules are.
Thank you, Scott, I appreciate that. So I just, I know, so I just, we know, we know what we can drive. I don't want to get into how much I drive, what we do, just know that we do the best we can do, so.
Can I make a comment, Mr. President? I just want to say, I, I'm not happy with any of these cuts that we're talking about tonight, but I think the one that I'm least amenable to is cutting the public works employee. I think that that will have a direct impact on the quality of life in this town, and it's gonna hit everybody hard the first time we have this snow, or the second time or third time, and with the, with the weather patterns that we've had lately, to expect a mild winter is, is ridiculous. So I, I know that, that I'm not on board with, with all these cuts, but I just want to say that if you're choosing which of these cuts are the worst, I think this, this is up there, and if there's some way that you can steer your, your way around, cutting one of, one of, one of four workers that are left in public works, I think we gotta do everything we can to do that. That's my own personal opinion.
So we, we can't cut, there is nothing else to cut out of this budget. Sincerely, there's nothing else. So we have the 42, the only other option would be to take the money from the capital reserve to do that, but then we're not going to have enough money, January, February, and March, and April, to pay the bills, so.
You know, I'm not comfortable in getting rid of the capital reserve either.
I know, I'm, I'm telling you the, the two options that are left. That's, that's where we're at. So, you know, and that's why I presented this to you, because you asked me to put the public works person back in there if I could, and I, I will. I'll use the 42, I need another 52 to make that happen, so.
Mr. Parker, where do we want to go from here? I mean, I, I think we're a bit of a, at a standstill. We, we've seen what we can see, we've seen the cuts, we've seen the additions, it's just not coming, it's just not coming to the numbers we need. And I mean, I, I agree that we should have an, you know, try to find that money for the public works person, but I also think we should try to find the money for the roof, you know, and it's just not there. And, you know, we can be tied over for five months, and then the sixth month comes, sixth month comes, and we're, we're still riding by the skin of our teeth. So do we, do we just vote on this and, and vote on it and be, and live with it? I mean, because that's where I see where we are now. I mean, we, we just can't wait any longer. If we're gonna go to, to ask for, you know, more millage, or, well, we're not doing that now, but.
No, we are, we.
Oh, we still are, that's right, because we have to go up to 33, yes, I'm sorry.
We still have to ask for the 1.65.
The 1.6, or 7. Yeah, and, and do the advertising and do all of that. We've got to make a move here, because once we actually, you know, pass this proposed final budget, the public still has to come out and speak, and you have to have that public meeting. So there's a lot to happen in the next six weeks, and I just think we need to move. I just don't know that we have the time to have another budget session after this evening. So I, I really think we should just make, make a move. If this is what it is, and we can't do anymore, then this is what it is. Call for the vote and, and, and at least, you know, get the lives back together for a little while, and, and you can stop doing budgets for a bit. I mean, I, I don't know if anything else is being neglected at this time, but I know you've spent a lot of money on, a lot of money, a lot of time on budgets, and I, I think there's been more budget meetings this time than there were like maybe three years in a row.
All right, so.
Excuse me.
Unless anybody has anything else, we're gonna go to 4C. Call for a motion to adopt the proposed, most recent proposed 2022 budget.
Some moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. We've had.
I'm sorry.
One more, Scott, go ahead.
If I may, the, it would be option B, but, but we're going to move the 42,557 to be up to balance that budget.
Yes.
And the contingency.
Into the contingency, as you said.
Bringing that to a budget, that brings us to a balanced budget.
Yes, which I'll provide.
All right.
One last question.
Go ahead.
The capital reserve is staying where it is?
For now.
Identified as TAN fund.
No, not, not this year.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Jan, your roll call, please. Does anyone have to make a motion first? We have a motion in a second.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Mike.
Thank you. Is it Lamo?
Yes.
Is it Paul?
No.
Robinson? Josh? Is it Sherlock?
No.
No.
Is it Jaeger?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
No. Motion passes, then we are going on to 4D.
It was 3-3, wasn't it?
Was it? Was it 3-3? I thought it was, sorry, I miscounted. So it has to go to the mayor.
No, no, wait a minute.
No, he can't do the budget.
Needs to be voted again.
Yeah. Didn't Scott?
Yeah, he's right, this is 3-3.
Oh, that's right, Justin's not.
Yeah. All right, so I have a standstill.
So we vote on it again in November when Justice is here?
Vote tonight, again, if you think it's.
What happens if we don't have a balanced budget by the end of the year?
Close the borough.
We close the borough.
Well, exactly how's that, walk me through that, because I think we're, we're starting to look at that one, I know exactly what happens. I mean.
The borough was closed. There's no, there's no police, there's no nothing, the borough is closed.
That's what happens, but, but the court, somebody would, would go to court and they would, the court would force you to, to have your police on the road and, and your public works back out, that's what I've been told.
Yes.
That it would be, you know, there would be an injunction against not, not providing the services. But you do effectively stop pretty much everything else, so.
Should we vote again, or what are we doing?
I'm not changing, I can tell you that much.
No, I'm not changing.